Order is now seven thirty.
Told you.
She had to start for the court.
Call to orders now, seven thirty. Welcome to Lamore City Council Chambers. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Salute.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Pastor Davis, can you come here in location? Please remain standing.
Oh God, we thank you. We thank you for this day you've allowed us, oh God. And oh God, as we prepare for this city council meeting, oh God, we ask you, oh God, to let your will be done. Oh God, let us all be led by you, oh God, in whatever decision has to be made. Bless us all to be cordial and to do what you would have us to do. And oh God, we ask you, oh God, to bless each and everyone here. Allow your will to be done, and we will give you glory, oh God. And also remember the city as a whole. Remember our city, oh God. Keep your angels of protection around it, oh God, and let, once again, your will be done. And oh God, we will give you glory and honor in all of the praise. In Jesus' name we do pray and we all say.
Amen. Okay, moving on. Agenda approval additions and or deletions, any? See, there's. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Blair.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Mayor Proten-Billenly.
Here.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Thank you. Going on to a public comment. Anybody want to expound on something that is not on the agenda? Come and take three minutes of your time. Mister Reed.
Tom Reed, ten sixty, for Admiral Lamore, mayor, council members. The council of the previous council meeting unanimously passed a motion to approve a Kings County Office of Education fiber optic cable installation that will improve the internet access to Lamore City schools and to the city offices. It certainly makes sense to coordinate any city work with this installation to minimize traffic disruption and cost, unless, of course, this coordination results in unforeseen delays that would actually increase cost. The amazing thing about this motion being passed was that it was unanimous five to nothing vote, a rarity with this council. Included with this motion was to work with the school district to ensure students and parents are aware of internet availability and ensure they have access at home. This addition to the motion that passed five to nothing makes me think that this council has solved the issues brought before it and that council and staff now have time and possibly revenue to proceed with this endeavor. I say that facetiously, of course, because this council has many issues to be resolved and staff does not have time to address non-city items, otherwise wouldn't be overstaffed. Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the school district have its own elected board and its own funding stream for these educational activities? Doesn't the school district board talk with the Kings County Office of Education and have the expertise to manage their area of responsibility? While the city of Lamore will certainly benefit from a more educated populace and workforce, that is not the responsibility of this council. Should an individual council member, staff member, members of this audience or others believe they have concerns and/or suggestions about the education of the Lamore City school students, the school board has regular meetings one could attend. And I would suppose there is a public comment time for such individuals to make their concerns and suggestions known. We must ensure that our house is in order before we attempt to place another's house in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Reed. Amy.
Hello, Amy Ward, Chamber CEO. So sorry for the attire. If you guys weren't aware, today Surf Ranch held a job fair where they were hiring for a variety of positions from security to hostess servers to lifeguards, just a lot of things going on. What I wanted to touch on today was just their commitment, and I'm sure you guys are all already aware, their commitment to hiring local. This was something today that was very evident. It would have been very easy for them to open this up and people come in from all over or bring in other people, but today they chose to open it up locally and bring jobs here. So as we move forward as a community, I want to thank Surf Ranch, obviously, for what they're doing here, but also just commend them for that. And I think as a city, it's necessary that we support them, that we're here, and if you guys get the opportunity, I highly advise you guys to check it out, see more about it, and just thank them for what they're doing here because they don't have to. So that is really all that I have here. We have a lot of events coming up, obviously Pizza Festival, I'll be bringing more information. I'm also working on a fairly large project that I will be bringing you guys shortly and hopefully a study session. So if you guys need anything from me, you know how to reach me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, Kristen Curcio, Birch Avenue, Lamore. The first thing I'd like to do is address a twenty-five dollar late fee that you guys have a policy if you don't make your water payment on the due date. Here's the scenario. Any taxpaying citizen in a tight jam financially struggles to come up with the past due balance, shows up to pay the past due balance on the first open day of the business week to find out that they have to pay an additional twenty-five dollars because he didn't make it on the day before, on the due date. Would happen to be a holiday and you were closed. Their water was turned off, hence to come up with additional twenty-five dollars. The administration needs to look at this and there needs to be a grace period, put in this policy to ensure this doesn't happen again. I want to address a dog park grading. Anybody got dogs? No? You don't go to the dog park? So we all understand it's in a water basin, the way that it's drained, while the water happens to come to the big area, the big dogs, and the water sits. And then the water gets stagnant and it gets really raunchy. So maybe in the future, they need to look at doing the grading and make the water go towards the drain and not come back into the dog park. The other thing is, I'd like to maybe put a proposal that you look at putting maybe motion sensor LED lights out in that area in the future. I was on Facebook before I got here, so I'm frustrated. So I want to ask the city to structure new social media policy for the use of the name City of Lamore or City Council, which are all government listings and should have legal authorization to use those names or for any sitting official. Add limits to what can be posted using the legal name affiliated to the City of Lamore or City Council and restrict posts that promote violence, bullying, name-calling, or any other things using family pictures, the F-word, whether it's in music, whether you're quoting it. It's under the City of Lamore, and I think it's time that you guys get this in check. You'll hear I reported Ms. Blair's Facebook page. There are a number of posts that I reported for bullying.
Excuse me. I want you to consider talking to the whole council.
I am. I'm not, that's what I'm saying.
You said her name.
I wanted, oh, this Lamore City Council member who has a public post, I reported that post for bullying and for the promotion of violence.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mister Reed? Okay. I see, okay, I seen you getting back up. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Going once, going twice? I see there's none. Okay, ceremonial presentations, there's none. Department and city manager report. City manager?
Good evening, mayor and council members. So I'll be the only one giving a report tonight. Sorry now, well number ten is still under rehab. They've fixed multiple sections or have the damage, only to get a little bit deeper and find that there's some more damage a little bit deeper. So, so far, they've been able to dig out the rubble where it has collapsed, and it's looking good, but we still haven't, you know, finished all the hurdles to getting that well up. Typically, that well comes back online this month. So we still have a little bit to go, so we'll probably be coming back to council looking for some funds to get that well up and going once we get the final reports. Secondly, had a meeting last week with the tribal council out at the rancheria, and I want to thank Amy Ward. It was actually her meeting. She got notified the night before, pretty late, and hey, you want to come out and meet? So she let us tag along with her. Good meeting. We spent about an hour and forty-five minutes talking about history and the desire and the need for both parties to want to move forward and collaborate more. We've received an email with all, for better term, their department heads in the different areas, so we know who to contact when we want to. Amy had mentioned the pizza festival coming up, so we have engaged the, they will be bringing dancers out from the tribe. They're going to have cultural education tents set up and be part of the community. And they actually invited us out to take their orientation class for new hires to learn about their culture and different things, so we're excited for that. So I want to, again, thank Amy for that because that's been a meeting I've wanted to add for quite some time. Came up quick, though. You gotta be ready to go when they say jump. Secondly, we closed on the eighty acres last week. So the eighty acres is closed, it's officially transferred to John Cashin and KCal LP. The interesting thing there is now that it's closing is we've been approached by the developer and some businesses about the possibility of relooking at our ordinance about cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. So as you know, part of our desire to get this eighty acres developed was to help shore up the general fund. In January of eighteen, we passed a pretty significant package to all the employees of the City of Lamore for compensation and benefits. And as part of that, we knew we would have to shore up the revenues in the near future. So getting this eighty acres developed is important. Now, this is a new request, so what I'm asking from council tonight is for consensus to have staff go out, gather some data, possibly come back with some study sessions, and then potentially put it on a future agenda to see if we want to entertain the thought of changing our current ordinance that does not allow cultivation or manufacturing of cannabis within the city limits. So that's all I have, so I'm looking for consensus to bring that back.
Yes, you have consensus from me, and I know there's a neighboring city that is going to be talking about the same thing tonight, so I think, I think what you're doing is great, so. Agreed?
Agreed.
No.
You do have consensus.
Thank you, that's all, mayor.
Okay, that's it. Going to consent calendar, section three. Do I have any council members want to pull anything from this item?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Well, I got a first from Mister Billensley. Mister Billensley? And I got a second by Mister Brown. Mister Billensley?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Stewart?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Public hearings. Let's see, there's no public hearings. New business, section five. Report discussed and/or other council actions will be taken. Information is only QK update with progress of storm drain. Master plan, Rivera.
Good evening, mayor and council members. A few of you may remember, but back in March of two thousand seventeen, council approved a contract with QK to develop master plans for sewer, water, and storm drain. At the February nineteenth study session, Corolla did their part. They actually did a presentation on the sewer and water portion. Tonight, we have QK to give you a presentation on storm drain, so.
Good evening, council. Rick Joiner, contract city engineer. I'm here to present the storm drain master plan. Of course, Frank stole a portion of this. At their, QK was commissioned to prepare the storm drain master plant, or master plan for water collection, sewer, water, wastewater treatment, storm drain master plans back in May of two thousand seventeen. We subcontracted with Corolla Engineering to do the water and wastewater master plans. Two weeks ago, of course, you've heard Corolla's presentation about update on the progress of the water and master plans, and QK has prepared the storm drain master plan's received review. I just want to point out, we had Mister Harry Tow from our office work diligently on this with a lot of help from Frank Rivera, Frank Susan, several retired public groups employees, David Laushen, Fred Yumanis, and Rick Yanis. There it goes. All right, just, we can go just slightly, a little bit of engineering, don't want to go too much into the big details. But basically, what we use is what they call the modified rational method. The formula is Q equals CIA. It's a cornerstone for most hydrological analysis and accepted by the engineering community as kind of a standard. We've kind of established rainfall intensity for ten-year, two-day event runoff and a one-hundred-year, ten-day event designed for design basis. And we simplify the coefficients of runoff. Basically, the coefficients is the more grass you have, or the coefficient is, the less water produces. So your big industrial places have a coefficient of point eight because most of that is paved and under roof, so you don't end up having, have it there. Where your low density residential is forty percent, or point four, and your multiple residential is point seven. And it just, you basically multiply Q times the I times the area and it gets you the volume. What we've done for our pipelines is we've basically used a two-hour, six-hour, a two-year, six-hour storm for the sewer and residential area. The runoff of this storm is point one, point one-one inches. And then for your industrial and your commercial areas, a five-year, six-hour storm was assumed for any areas for that. This criteria does not model the heavy downpours. We get the big gully washers in there, it doesn't model that. It models the slow-moving storms that typically in the valley, almost like the storm we have here, not coming down really hard, coming down nice, slow, and steady. That's what we do. You have a big runoff, that's where you end up with a problem with your streets flooding and so forth. We really don't model that kind of, that because it gets expensive to have pipes large enough to handle flow that you get once or twice every twenty years. Drainage basins, the city uses basically two types of drainage basins. They use retention basin and detention basin. The biggest difference between the two, a retention basin has no pump to, no outlet pump to pump the stormwater into the canal or other facilities, and detention basin, the water basically sits there and has to percolate or evaporate. Okay, our retention basins, I think I went too far. Okay. Retention basins should be designed to handle basically a rainfall total of five, six, five-point-six-eight inches of rain, and your detention basin is designed for three-point-three inches. Detention basins also have a pump, or also have a lift station involved with those to pump the water out. Typically, you want to see emptying the basin in about ninety-six hours. But, why ninety-six hours? This National Pollution Elimination System Phase Two Rule. Basically, what they want to do is have time for the particulates to settle out of the storm drain water. Your oils and greases that come out of your, off your roads, your trash and so forth, gives a chance to settle out, then you pump it into your canals and your other facilities. Yeah, what we've got here is the existing storm drain system, kind of a small map, but it shows you existing storm drain systems. You have your pipelines into your various basins. You also have your existing storm drain lift stations. You have basically twenty-five lift stations currently in the, in the city right now, the city maintains. And existing storm drainage basins. We have, there are sixteen storm drainage basins at various sizes. Most of your basins are right outside, are slightly undersized. They require the lift stations to operate during, during storm events. So enable, you've got to catch up and make sure the next storm comes in, there's not enough time to really let the water sit there for any length of time. Your disposal areas you have, there are several disposal areas around the city. Basically, what we have is there's an eight-hundred acres disposal west of town that is, was set up to put your, basically your stormwater out. There is also a fifty-five acre conservation area west of West Hills College that can be utilized for storm drainage use. The area, that basin, though, is under contract for, to take over the tract just north of the basin and a couple properties on the other side of, on north of Bush. Things south of that is not contracted to go into that basin. That will have the conversation with the city, with the West Hills. Existing storm drainage problems, that's what everybody basically sees. In fact, you go out there today, you'll probably see several of these places actually flooded now. We've got them highlighted in there. The biggest one, this little green one right, that little three, that in that new subdivision, we're getting that fixed with the next project that's getting ready to go out to bid. We'll be able to fix that. It's some issues with the, basically the basin higher than the inlets in the, in the subdivision. So we're getting that fixed, several of them. We have the D Street problem, that's discussed, we do go into details on fix on that. That requires quite a bit of, basically, some additional piping down to the high school basin, additional configuration of the high school basin, another outfall structure. Okay, cost for existing drainage problem, that's always the big one. Downtown high school basin, we're looking about one-point-seven million dollars, there about. Your commercial flooding, just your little minor flooding out in the, basically out in the streets and that, it's about a hundred ninety-two thousand. The Hess Basin drainage facilities, the Hess Basin is the one that is down south of town, that is this one down in here, that's the Hess Basin. That one, the size of it needs to be kind of increased to be able to handle additional information. We do have other solutions to pick that up, was identified in the storm drain master plan. And then your localized street ponding concerns, those are your, your small basins are, those are basically your DI's that are too small, need to be larger, some additional pipe size, get them larger to get the water through there. Location, community growth, that is how, what we're going to do, how to make, how we're going to handle storm drainage for the future. We have, east of, or west of forty-three here, or forty-one, we have the, that area there, most of that water can go into our outfall structure here, our basin there, and that can be handled by just design as we go through additional storm drain mains to go through and basically pump the water there. There's an existing basin at that little green dot there, that'll need to be larger. Right now, that's a detention basin, we need to turn it into a retention basin, larger, so we can develop. The big concern that is how are we going to develop north of Hampton Road? We've got, basically, what we've done, we've broken it down into six different areas, drainage areas. Those each will have to have their own separate ponds, retention ponds, and we're basically, and we're going to be building a main, force main from that over to dump into the Lamore Canal at Lacy and Seventeenth. And in these two areas here, we'll ramp into the A Canal. That's some additional money, the city's basically building the backbone for that information to be paid by impact fees. But in the past, until you get that in, that put together, it'd be having the developer develop a detention basin at that point, and then once it develops, we're going to put it in retention basin mode. Total costs in that area, one for the college, we're looking about one-point-one million dollars. The north expansion, subarea two A and two B, which is this area on the, basically, west of Bind, or Liberty, north Hampton Road, you're looking at about two-point-six million dollars. And then area two C, two D, two E, and two F, which is basically the remaining area, these four areas just north of the north line, that's approximately a three-point-eight million dollars. So your total growth is at about seven-point-five million. That's not something to go out and build today, you don't need to have it, has developers come in, you have the infrastructure put in place. What we've done is, how do you pay for that? Area one is about eight-hundred-and-fifteen units, area two is about four-hundred, forty-eight-hundred units. Improvement cost is seven-point-five million dollars. Your current stormwater impact fee is about seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars per single-family unit. That will get you about four-point-one million dollars if you collect that money. So you have a shortfall about, you basically get about half. Through our analysis and so forth, we're looking at probably about a sixty-three-hundred-dollar per acre impact fee. But of course, we can't, that's not part of it, just kind of recommendation, you have to go through the studies and various other things. So while we're at this, the various, the other steps we have, there's several additional steps prior to adopting any of the, any of the master plans, need to see what adoption. Once Sequel gets adopted, then there'll be some rate studies. I'm sure that the water and wastewater master plan will have a recommendation for how they fund their improvements needed there, storm drain master plan, various things been changed in the city standard plan, standard specifications for design criteria that we've outlined in our, in at least the storm drain master plan, sewer will be the same way. Okay? With that, are there any questions?
Yes, I was looking at, you said high school basins?
Yes.
Also, storm drains, basins, you have different types of basins. What about recharge basins, is that, is that one, too? I noticed you didn't bring that one up.
We don't have any recharge basins. That is something that can definitely be looked at. Those are your retention basins, or detention basins. But what ends up happening on detention basins, we're not anticipating any soil, any soil soaking up the water, it's going to basically sit there. With the high groundwater we have, we have, that's kind of an issue there. But that's definitely something to look at, is the conservation area, which is down south here, that's kind of an ideal, you can kind of put in for recharge basin, but that's something you kind of look at.
And that information with recharge basins, you know what that is talking about, right?
Yes, the recharge basins, and there's areas there. Do you have anything to bring up, Harry? Okay. Yeah, the, basically, the recharge basin is, we've got to have a place, a nice sandy bottom, put the water in there, let it soak.
Exactly, okay.
We've got to find the right, right area. If we find a good sand creek, a good place to put it, that's the place we want to attack.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Are there any of the current locations that we have now or are working on to develop that have anticipated any digging for any further depth in any of our wells? Are there any, is there any anticipation of any well digging in any of the nearby basins?
You mean new water wells?
Well, either new or of us having to dig any further in any existing. So I just want to know if there's going to be any anticipated, you know, further digging in any of our basin locations or any of the anticipated basin locations.
I do know that well fifteen is located south of the golf course. During that process there, since we're putting the well basically in the basin, we're going to reconfigure that basin, make it slightly larger, and then build the well and infrastructure on the east half of that basin.
The reason I bring it up and something I'd like to keep into consideration as we proceed is, at times, I know some of the wells that were dug out in Kalinga, for example, as they go down further, there's a bit of a sucking kind of vacuuming that occurs during that digging process, and it sometimes turns our sandy soil that we love to retain that water into a more clay-like substance as it compacts further with that vacuuming. And that's a concern because, of course, we need that sandy soil to absorb the water. Clay does us no good, and so going forward, do you have precautions or are you keeping that in mind as we go forward?
That's kind of, on that information, that's kind of your water, water, your water well information. And what happens, it doesn't turn into clay, it basically eliminates the air voids in your sand, so you're not having, you still got it there, but that's the well.
And it's clay-like, yes, the consistency develops into a thicker and it makes it harder for water to absorb then.
Yeah, well, well tends a prime example of what's happening is you got the subsidence and you get the crushing of that. With a basin close by and be able to recharge with that, it will definitely assist in that opportunity. But of course, you've got to worry about the, what kind of particulate matters are getting into that basin. So that's kind of, you put a recharge basin at that point next to a water well, it's a good idea to have it go through another basin, settle out for forty-eight hours, ninety-six hours, then ship it off over there, so you get that filtering process.
Okay, and those are in place right now?
Yes, that is part of the master plan recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, going to five asks two. Reporting recommendations, contract award of budget amendment of engineering service associated with the city improvement of approximately eighty-three-point-four acres located near the northeast corner of State Route forty-one of Idaho Avenue. APN oh-two-four slash zero-five-one slash zero-three-one required by the disposable disposition and developing agreement between the city of KKAL LP Osen, contract by the. and developing agreement between the city of KKAL, LP Olsen, contract by the improvement of at meeting.
So, Mayor, I apologize for the interruption, especially after that long, um, heading, but can you open the previous item up to public comment before we move on to this item?
Absolutely. Okay, we're gonna go back to five dash one. Anybody in, in the public wanna expound on that? Going once, going twice? Going back to the council? Five dash two, can we continue?
You can continue. You don't have to reread the whole thing.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's a lot.
Um, LP Olsen, go ahead and
So, good evening, Mayor and council members. So, what's before us tonight is to get this project on that 80-plus acres that we signed the, uh, basically ordinance number 2018-dash-zero-nine with KKAL and the city of Lemoore. Under that agreement, in our development disposition agreement, the city is obligated to do certain improvements, including 60-foot right-of-way, which would be asphalt, the wet utilities, which includes the sanitary sewer, water, and storm drain, ponding basin relocation, and the irrigation canal improvements. So, we're, we're contracted to do that. We've gone out, I requested three bids. Um, I've only received two, so I submitted those two. And the low bid in this case, to get this project out to bid, so all this does is get all the engineering and the drawings and the bid package together so we can go out and award this to get moving on it, um, is about 148,000 dollars. So, we, I'm asking tonight that, um, council go ahead and authorize us to sign to the contract to get this going. Once we sign this contract and we get out to bid, that's what starts the clock for the developer to, then he's obligated to build out 12 acres every two years. Um, but until that, that clock doesn't start until the city puts their improvements in. These costs for the engineering upfront will come out of street development impact fees, and then
Okay.
Um, we have those fees set aside. They've been collected throughout the years for projects such as this. And then the other, um, water, wastewater, and storm drain will come out of the various, um, enterprise funds and development impact fees in those accounts.
Same, Mayor. I was just wondering, why didn't you give us, uh, the contract beforehand?
Cause the contract wasn't ready yet, so we, we have it when we post the agenda to get it out there.
So, we have access to it right now?
Yes, it was a handout, so you have it. You should have it in front of you. There you go. Right there it is. It's right here.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is just basically, i- it's a, the template we use, but I send it off to the engineer so they can
You guys, you just gave us this tonight?
Yes.
And so, we, you want us to read, take a minute to read through this and, and then come back with you? Give us like 10 minutes to go down there and go through and read through it, and then come back to you and give us our, our options on that?
That would be entirely up to you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm noticing
I'd like to also point out that this isn't the only thing that we got kind of last minute. I saw the email regarding, um, what's been offered by our, our tribal, um, brothers and sisters, and, and I barely received that email, uh, just before coming here for our meeting. So, we have a, a bit of a problem with receiving information at the
Excuse me.
Moments before the meeting.
Council member, council member Blair, we have to keep the comments specific to this agenda item.
I'm just pointing out, this is not the only agenda item that we're being asked to vote on with mere minutes to look at it.
I understand, but for Brown Act purposes, we have to stick to the agenda item.
Okay. Okay. What we gonna do now, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess and come back to you.
We lost power to our mics.
No, we're back on.
You're back.
Okay, back to, going back to, we're gonna still expound on five dash two. Mr. Olsen, go ahead and continue.
So, the, basically, we received the two quotes. What this contract is, is merely, it's, it's a standard contract the city uses for all of these. We take down some of the information, add it into the appendix. It just wasn't, uh, it wasn't available at the time we posted, trying to get everything out as early as possible. So, that's why you didn't have the contract in your package.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all the council?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I really appreciate Mr. Olsen's aggressiveness with this particular item. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve item five dash two.
Do you have the staff report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Cause there's, it's, besides approving the contract with A and M Engineering, there's also approval for the association budget amendments. We can take the money from the impact fees and move them out to an expense account, and we have those in your package as well.
And then, Mayor, if you could also open it up to public comment before you do that.
Okay. I'm gonna close it to the council, open it to the public. Anybody wanna expound on this? See, there's none. Back to the council. Can I get a motion?
We're looking for a motion or a consensus.
Are we going to have a discussion?
Motion.
Motion. You want any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that the proposed budget amendments would, I just did a quick little math here, uh, amount to a, a, uh, increase of our budget of 148,121 dollars proposed. I do not think that's financially prudent. Um, I don't think that our city finances should allow us to increase a, a project by nearly 150,000 dollars than our initial proposed budget.
So, Mayor and council, as part of the development agreement, this is why we collect impact fees is for growth of the city and to bring new businesses in. So, it's an, it's an increase of our spend, yes, uh, out of the general fund, uh, 54,000. The rest is coming out of enterprise accounts. Now, I keep in mind that as part of our disposition and development agreement, we have, we are obligated to go forth with this project. If we choose not to do this project or funding isn't approved, then there's a cap that the city would be liable to pay 4 million dollars to the developer on this agreement.
Well, it's my opinion that at the rate we're going, that's probably going to be the overcost in the end anyway.
Okay, can I get a motion? Or you wanna expound on this too?
No.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, um, to make a motion to approve these task fees.
Okay, I got Mr. Billingsley.
Sir.
I got Mr. Brown. Mr. Billingsley?
So, what, the motion was to approve the fees, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, the recommendation, just so we have a clear record, is that council approve the contract with A and M Engineering, approve the associated budget amendment, and authorize the city manager to execute the contractual documents?
Yes, I'd like to approve all of those.
Okay, so it could be the motion as stated by the city attorney.
Take a nice second as, with the city attorney stating.
Don't worry about it, buddy.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion as stated by the city attorney.
Second, as proposed.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Billingsley, a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, going to city council reports and requests, section six. Any council, okay, Mrs. Blair?
I'd like to start off with a question, actually, uh, for our city attorney. I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna ask the question for the record anyway. Um, are we allowed to discuss anything, um, in our current mediation processes?
No, mediation's confidential.
I see. Okay. Well, I don't know what has come over our council in recent weeks, but, uh, I'm very pleased to see you're finally taking my advice and reaching out to our tribal brothers and sisters and trying to develop a better relationship with them. As you will recall, our first meeting as a, a new body together, I had, uh, suggested such a, enter, uh, such a project, and, um, at that time, you treated the gift that they gave to us with such disdain. It was embarrassing. Um, due to the censure, I will not be present, but I do hope that you will send my regards to the council. I did very much enjoy the tribe's, um, summit that I was invited to, and shout out to Tishani. I will not forget to share the knowledge. So, um, please send my regards and let them know why I'm not present. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, attended the, uh, chamber mixer for, uh, Yemena, uh, had a great time. Uh, was there at the mayor. Uh, mayor did a great job, uh, representing the city.
Thank you.
Other thing is, I attended a CART meeting, have nothing to report out. Attended K-KAG. Uh, they're doing a, a San Joaquin policy conference. They're looking for sponsors. I'll share the information with, uh, the city manager, uh, so we can kind of send it out, maybe to the chamber, get some information out, but, um, on that date, it's, it's, it's coming in April. Uh, had a, uh, Sigma meeting, attended the Sigma meeting, and that's where we talk about, uh, uh, groundwater sustainment and the things that, uh, mayor talked about earlier about, uh, basically, um, recharging aquifers and things of that nature. There's hydrologists on board. Uh, once that GSP is passed, our groundwater sustainment plan is passed, it will ha- it will cover basically our area, uh, of, 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 of the Tulare Basin, sub-basins. So, um, so we have some people on that that will be coming out, and that, I believe, uh, uh, we have some people coming in from, uh, Sigma. They're gonna be presenting to the, to the, uh, council. Um, I think that's two B is, uh, you know, that's, that's coming up. Uh, so if you have questions, uh, if you have any questions, you know, uh, the next meeting for Sigma will be here in these chambers on the 21st of March at 5:30. So, if you have any questions on that and what it's all about, uh, bottom line is, it's, it's, it's maintaining your, your, you're sustaining your aquifers and your, and your, to what they are at a certain level and date, uh, and it's, uh, it's our plan forward. And, uh, we have to have that plan created by January of, uh, 2020. If we don't, the state will come in and force us to do it. So, a lot of money, but, uh, got a good team there, uh, that's working it. So, um, one other thing is, uh, just wanna thank, um, uh, oh, one of the things I brought up at K-KAG is, uh, the, uh, off ramps going on to the 198. Kinda, the, the shrubs and everything get kinda high, and it's hard to see traffic coming east or westbound on 198 as you're entering 198 off of Lee Moore Avenue. So, I asked them to go in there and, and take a look at that and trim that back some. Uh, I had the concurrence of the K-KAG, uh, boards on that, so that way it makes it a little safer. So, um, other than that, I just wanna thank staff, wanna thank, uh, all of department heads, police department, fire, uh, you name it. Everybody there, we're all working together to make the city better. Just wanna thank everybody. Uh, there's some good things we do. Uh, you know, we're working forward, trying to make things better, and, and I wanna thank the citizens of Lemoore for being here tonight, you know? Uh, thank you very much. And thank UK for your, all your hard work. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, I, I did attend a, a meeting as well, the, uh, the King's Community Action Organization. And, uh, that, I'll tell you, that was, that was a really neat group of people right there. Uh, the direct, the chairman is, uh, Ms. Pat Nolan, and, uh, she runs a tight ship. She's a really nice lady. I like her a lot. Uh, Mr. Garner, Jeff Garner and Irene Moreno, they, they're the ones that, that were kind of in charge of the director and assistant. Um, all their items were passed, and they were really excited because they got a big donation from Aetna, Aetna Medical, and, uh, I don't know, it was, it was a lot of information and, uh, but yeah, it was, it was good times. It was an eye-opener. And, uh, yeah, I also like to thank our department heads. I see Chief German here. Nice to see you. Chief, you too. Um, yeah, and some new faces in the crowd today, too. So, that's all I have.
Good thing. Uh, Mr. Billingsley?
Absolutely. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Ward and Mr. Olsen for reaching out to the tribal council. I think that's fantastic that, uh, that they're gonna attend the Pizza Festival and, uh, and be part of our community. They're a big part of our history, and I'm happy to see them, them join us. Also, I attended a mosquito abatement meeting, uh, two weeks ago, and, uh, they're building, uh, a new facility just south of Hanford. So, it's a, it's a much-needed facility. Uh, they need a little bit room, uh, more room to work with. And last week, I attended a King's EDC meeting with Mr. Olsen. Got a lot of good things going on in Kings County, a lot of stuff that's gonna generate tax revenue here in the city, and that's really what we need. So, looking forward to all that, and that's all I got.
Absolutely. Okay, Ms. City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor Neil and Council, I forgot in department reports, but, uh, the assistant city manager myself had her, had a very intense two hours this morning as our bonds were up for sale, and we got to watch all the action live via our computers. And, uh, the good news is, is when bond, bound council, bond council was here, and they were discussing our 30 million dollars in bonds, they were anticipating we'd come in at an interest of about a 4.3. We ended up closing the day at a 3.91, so down four points from where we thought we were at. Um, saves a little bit more money, but, uh, the market's held, did very well, so we should see funding, I believe, the week of March 19th. So, the, all the heavy lifting's done. Now, it's just the, the semantics of executing and getting the bonds out and all the signatures. So, uh, good day for Lemoore, good day for water quality and infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I had to tell Michelle to shut off her computer. She's, she's losing her hair this morning. I tell you what, those people earn their money. That's pretty intense. You're talking millions of dollars.
Yes, I can imagine.
It was a, it was a learning curve, that's for sure. But, uh, thank you for your support, council. We appreciate it.
Okay, I have a few. Um, going on to, on the city, uh, Lemoore website, under municipal code, chapter five, planning commission is to establish a tree committee under section five, under section seven, five, four. Um, I, I would like to know, do we have a, a tree commit- committee? Anything to do with that? Like, when we take trees down, we put trees back in?
Yeah. So, I will, Judy, do you wanna take this on, or do you want me to get back to him? It's my understanding that the tree committee's been defunct for several years.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I used to be on the tree committee years, and then they, as far as I know, they pushed it over to where
Oh, we don't have it? Okay.
Let her chief.
I, I'm not certain that it says planning commission is, is to, um, have a tree committee. I, um, I remember that David Wallashin oversaw the tree committee, so I was thinking it was Public Works, but I could be mistaken. But I know that, um, gosh, if my memory serves me correctly, I believe that this item came before council several years ago.
Okay.
And they eliminated the tree committee. That doesn't mean we can't bring it back. So, if, that, and that's all I can remember.
And Mayor Neil and Council, we'll look into that and send out a
Before I do a census on that, uh, before I do a census on that?
So, there's no action items right now, Mayor. It would just be the directing staff to look into it.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, last but least, uh, on the city Lemoore website, under municipal code, chapter four, advertising displays, um, far as for the highway, if you go look in Hanford or you look at Tulare's highways, the emblems that they have on there, uh, we need to beautify our city. Our city, when you drive through our city, it's, we, we have a great name here, so I wanna keep that name great in our city, and, um, everybody has ups and downs. Every city has ups and downs, but when you drive through a city, you wonder, what do this, what do this city promote? We're agriculture, we're nazi, we're, we're all, we're all the above. We're, we're, we deal with adversity well. At the same time, I like the diversity that's going on. So, what I'm saying is, if we can get like, did you ever look in, see if we can get anything to do with, uh, like, we were talking about it. I remember one time before, like, putting a jet over here by the park.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something to say, this is a military town, or this is a town for agriculture, military. It goes good together, something that's gonna be, where it's gonna, it's gonna captivate the people's eyes. Okay, thank you. I, I didn't mean to give you that long testimony, but, uh,
So, Mayor, before you adjourn the meeting, I just wanted to get you before you hit the cabbol.
Thank you. You're fast. You are fast.
Pay attention. Um, I need to report out that there was nothing to report from
I need to report out that there was nothing to report from closed session, so we have a clear record.
Absolutely, thank you so much. It is now 8:26, adjourned.